Okay. This meeting is called to order. Welcome to the first Student Affairs and Special Programs meeting of 2011. I'd like to first begin by saying, first by welcoming the committee meeting members and guests. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Peter Jordan for his exemplary service to the university and its community and its constituencies. Dr. Jordan, on behalf of the CUNY Board, I hereby present you with a small token of our appreciation, a framed resolution. A framed resolution of appreciation that was unanimously adopted by the Board in recognition of your leadership in advancing the development of CUNY's students and their academic and personal growth during critical period. We're very pleased that you are remaining with the university as a Senior Student Affairs Officer at LaGuardia College. And, Dr. Jordan, would you like to say a couple of words?
I guess now I know why I got all the emails to ensure that I was here at five o'clock. Thank you, Trustee Foster. This means a tremendous amount to me. You didn't hear this, Chancellor, but the work that I've done over the last year, I might have done for free because it means that much to me. And it's been really a pleasure working with members of the Board Student Affairs Committee, but also members of the Board in general. I said this to Trustee Barry. I've worked with trustees at a number of institutions, at Higher Learning, that I've worked at over the last 30 years, but I have not encountered a Board that is as hardworking and as committed to our students. And so it's been really a pleasure and a privilege working with you, Trustee Foster, and Trustee Pacilli, and all of you, Trustee DiMartino, and all of you this past year. So I really appreciate this and will cherish it.
Well, we thank you so much for stepping up. We will be... And now, I'd like to introduce Dr. Frank Sanchez, our new Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs, and welcome him to CUNY and to this committee and to New York. Vice Chancellor Sanchez, we very much appreciate your outstanding record of senior-level service to students and your prior work in higher education. And we welcome you and your family. And we know that you have already had a busy day, on your first official day here at CUNY. So, welcome. Now, to the meeting. There are two action items and three information items before this committee this evening. First, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 7, 2010 meeting?
I move.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The minutes are approved. Second, now, Vice Chancellor Sanchez will provide us an overview of the amended bylaws of the Baruch College Association.
The CUNY Board of Trustees last approved revisions to the bylaws of the Bernard Baruch College Association in 1992. As part of a general view of its operations, the Association recently reviewed and revised the bylaws to better meet its needs and reflect current best practices. In accordance with Board Bylaws Section 16.10, the amended bylaws of the Association have been approved by the Baruch College President and reviewed by the University Office of the General Counsel. The Association retained its board structure of 13 members, composed of the Baruch College President or his designee as Chair, six students, three administrators, and three faculty members. The Budget Committee will consist of the full membership of the Board, less one administrator and one faculty member selected by the college president. I'll now ask Vice President for Student Affairs, Ben Corpus, to offer some comments. Ben?
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Sanchez, and thank you very much for taking the time to review this. As you mentioned, it has been a while since our bylaws have been changed. Our freshmen were not even born the last time the bylaws were adopted. And I really want to thank Vice Chancellor Schaefer for his work and his office's help in providing us the guidance that we needed to update our bylaws in regard to conflict of interest policies and indemnification, the laws that were required to be in there regarding nonprofits, as well as our provisions on an Audit Committee, Health Advisory Committee, and the new Programming Board with the recent increase in the student activity fee. With me today is our student who is on the Student Government, an elected member, the Secretary of the Undergraduate Student Government, Mr. Sal Chiarelli, who is a stellar student and is now a graduate student at Baruch College, to also answer any questions or provide remarks.
I'll move it.
All right. Fantastic. Any...all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? This action is passed.
Thank you, Trustee Foster.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right. Dr. Sanchez will now provide a brief summary of the tobacco policy resolution.
Well, this resolution updates, expands, and supersedes the policy enacted by Board Trustees Resolution effective January 1, 1995, where by CUNY prohibited smoking inside all facilities, including vehicles operated by the university. The revised tobacco policy must be implemented university-wide no later than September 4, 2012. I'll now ask Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost, Alexa Logue, to offer comments.
Okay, thank you. As the nation's largest urban public university and as a source of thousands of health professions graduates and the home of the new CUNY School of Public Health, CUNY has an opportunity and a responsibility to set appropriate standards as an example for universities seeking to protect the health of their students and employees. Tobacco is the leading preventable cause of death in New York City and in the world. The U.S. Surgeon General has determined that exposure to secondhand smoke is dangerous to health and that reducing exposure will save lives and reduce health expenditures. Research shows further that any exposure to secondhand smoke, even outdoors, has harmful biological consequences. Further, removing all smoking opportunities facilitates quitting. Last spring, at the request of Chancellor Matthew Goldstein, I convened a CUNY Tobacco Policy Advisory Committee to consider if and how the existing policy might be expanded to better protect the health of CUNY students, faculty, and staff. The committee conducted extensive research, deliberations, and solicitation of community views. This included establishing a website for this purpose. And we...the community was able to send in their comments on proposed expansion of the tobacco policy at CUNY. This was not supposed to be a scientific survey, but just an opportunity for people to send in their comments. We had about 600 people send in comments, and of those, only about 7% felt that the proposed policies were too restrictive. The committee also learned through its research that about 85% of CUNY students, faculty, and staff are non-smokers. And of those who do smoke, the 15% who do smoke, approximately 70% of them wished quit. The committee therefore recommended that CUNY's policy be expanded, as indicated in this resolution, to accomplish that goal. Across the United States, an ever-increasing number of colleges and universities are instituting tobacco-free policies. As of last October, at least 446 colleges and universities had enacted smoke-free or tobacco-free policies for their entire campuses, indoors and out. These other colleges and universities have not encountered significant problems enforcing tobacco-free policies. The Central Office will support the new policy by providing training, information, and other resources across the system. We're working closely with the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene on these efforts, and that department is going to give us several hundred thousand dollars to use for training and signage and other related and cessation efforts. Each college and the Central Office will be expected to submit college-specific implementation plans for review and approval by the Chancellery by no later than June 30, 2011. This policy, just to finish here, this policy promotes basic values of 21st-century American higher education, cultivating respect for others, emphasizing the importance of health and wellness, supporting environmental sustainability, and preparing students for professional success in increasingly tobacco-free workplaces.
Are there any questions? Vice Chancellor Sanchez will now introduce the annual report from NiPerg.
CUNY bylaws require that we receive an annual report from NiPerg on the past year's activities. NiPerg Director, Mr. Farouq Abdallah, will now present the 2009-2010 NiPerg Report to the committee.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor. My name is Farouq Abdallah. I'm NiPerg's Deputy Director. With me...
My name is Letitia Negron, and I'm a Project Coordinator at Bronx Community College.
I'm also joined here with...well, I'll introduce yourselves.
I'm Alex Morrissey.
And I'm Megan Hayes. I'm Regional Campus Director.
We're going to start by giving some general background on NiPerg and highlight some of our activities for last semester, and we'll do our best to keep it short.
Okay. I know that many of you are familiar with us, but for those of you who aren't, NiPerg is a statewide, student-directed, nonpartisan, nonprofit, student rights advocacy organization. We were founded in 1973 by students at Queens College, and since then, we've grown to 20 college campuses, nine of which are here at CUNY. CUNY students learn how to be active members of their communities through NiPerg's extensive training and hands-on experience in activism and advocacy. Students learn skills that further their classroom development, like writing a media release or speaking in front of large groups of people. Activities like registering new voters, classroom trainings, and full-time legislative internships make students more competitive for more competitive candidates for employment and allow them to get a better feel for the workforce upon graduation. Participating in NiPerg's campus program allows students to take on several different roles, which help them pick a career path. NiPerg entrusts students with great responsibility, whether it be representing the organization in the media or sitting in on the Board of Directors, which is comprised solely of students. As illustrated in our annual report, we're happy to report another productive year. From the report in front of you, we've selected some highlights that I'm going to expand upon now. NiPerg students and staff working on our voter mobilization campaign during the 2009 election year reached out to thousands of CUNY students on a strictly nonpartisan basis, ultimately registering roughly a few thousand CUNY students to vote before the October deadline. We also organized a Get Out the Vote campaign aiming to educate students about their rights on Election Day and about polling site locations. For our consumer protection projects, students spoke out against predatory lending for private student loans by organizing in favor and ultimately seeing the passage of the enactment of a Consumer Financial Protection Agency. Another key area of NiPerg's programming includes our service work, which is exemplified by our hunger prevention campaign. Highlights include recruiting and coordinating volunteers for soup kitchens and shelters and coordinating drives to provide goods such as food, clothing, and toys, CUNY-wide. For example, the Brooklyn College chapter organized a second annual Can You Kick It event to raise awareness for hunger while collecting cans of food. This year, collecting over 80 pounds of food while poets and singers performed for an audience over 100 students.
Thank you. Part of the report, which I realize for a good reason I'm the only one here, it's a detailed breakdown of all our activities at our nine CUNY chapters. And part of the report, in addition to the details of the activities, is the materials, news articles, all involving students. And in the back of the report is a breakdown of our expense reports for each of our chapters and then also a CUNY-wide one. Now, the way the statement and expense report is divided, it's divided by revenue, which represents money's received from the student activity fee from each student, which is 100% refundable. For students who don't wish to support the work that we do, we happily offer a refund. And the other half is the expenses that are occurred from the different programming work, some of which Alicia Adama described. Now, you will notice if...with the report, you'll notice that at some schools, they may show a slight deficit...sorry, a slight loss. That's not to suggest that we operate at a deficit. This just represents money's received from student activity fees. We do have other sources of revenue, such as small private donations, grants, and the such. We're happy to take any questions that people may have.
Question. So, at the beginning of the year, do you develop like a series of success metrics or performance measures that you say, okay, we're going to set goals that you're going to set out and try to achieve, and who's involved with that process?
It's a long process that students are directly involved with. Like we should mention, our Board of Directors is made up of students. So we as staff people, that's who we answer to. We answer directly to the students. And during the summer, we have three very intensive weekends where we begin by training the student Board of Trustees, not just their roles as leaders within the organization, but also the responsibilities of members of Board Trustees of a legal corporation. And then the second part, they receive presentations from our issue experts. They outline the program the year before, successes, failures, things they want to do differently, and what direction they want to take that particular issue. And then the third part, the Board takes the information that they received from the program staff and then working with our Executive Director on the financial picture of the organization. The Board comes up with the budget, and the Board passes the budget, and that's how the priorities are set by the students and by our Board, is up to this budget. And the Board receives regular updates from the Executive Director, regular updates from the issue experts. In fact, in two days, our State Board is meeting at Hunter College, where they will be receiving detailed updates from our program staff on the fall activities that they discussed in the summer.
Very good.
Is there an executive summary available?
Um...
Is there online, maybe?
Yeah, I know, it's pretty intense. Yeah, I know, it's not slow, that's light reading. Well, we could provide one. Happy to.
I don't want you to do any more work if it doesn't already exist. Is it available online? Can you...
No, this is not available online.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you.
Yes, excuse my ignorance, I'm new. Is there a relationship between NiPerg and this Board of Trustees, or are we getting this information just because it's important information?
Nine of the colleges that are involved with NiPerg are CUNY colleges. So every year, we do...
There's a requirement that an annual report be submitted to the Board of Trustees. They are meeting that requirement tonight at this committee meeting.
I wonder how relevant... Say that for the record? Okay. Okay. Any guests?
I would just like to say that we have enjoyed a very positive relationship with NiPerg over the years, and they've been a great asset to our campus in terms of training, appropriateness of presentation, and student engagement. And they work very closely with the student services offices, as well as with our PR office, Carol White.
CUNY three come. One. Seven. Eight. Seven. Six. Five. Four. Three. Two. One. Any other questions or comments? And just to piggyback off of that, President Williams, you know, NiPerg, we thank you very much for all the work that you've done specifically for the voter registration efforts. As we know, that's a great interest of yours. As you know, it is a great interest of CUNY's as well, not to mention your involvement, for you involving students in civic activities that are of educational value, as well as a benefit to our city. So thank you so much for all of your work, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
All right. And now, for the very first time, we will have Dr. Sanchez as Vice Chancellor or Address.
Well, sure. Good evening, Trustee Phil Berry, Trustee Foster, members of the committee, staff and colleagues. You know, there are a number of reasons why I am so pleased to be here at CUNY. In fact, you know, today's my first day at work, and I got to tell you, in pretty high level meetings, the President's Council, the COPS meeting, the academic meeting, and what I was so impressed with today was the language that was being used at these meetings, and specifically the word "students." I got to tell you, as a Student Affairs professional, to be in a...this room was filled with presidents and the Chancellery, and I would need more hands to count the number of times students or Student Affairs was brought up. In addition to the academic leadership, the importance of students with the CUNY mission and the history of CUNY is so evident. And being my first day at work, I got to tell you, I cannot be more enthused and excited about working with this team of professionals and people who are so much committed to moving the teaching and learning enterprise forward for students. I'm very excited. You know, to be part of an institution that, what, 1847, 163 years have been working to serve students and provide them a quality education, to think about the generation of students that have been impacted, and I have the opportunity to work with 23 institutions and the staff and the Student Affairs professionals to try to enhance those services is very exciting. I can't help but to think about my parents' experience. You know, my mom was a migrant child born in Piedras Negras, Mexico, worked in the fields through Texas and New Mexico and ended up in Colorado. Parents no more in the third grade education, one of nine children, and she was able to get an associate's degree by these educational opportunities. My dad was born in Cheyenne, Wyoming, of all places, and parents no more in a sixth grade education. He dropped out of high school, was able to get his GED, go to a community college, transfer to a four-year, and ended up getting two master's degrees. And it's the mission of CUNY and the opportunity that we provide students that, again, I'm privileged and honored to be a part of the community here, and I very much look forward to learning about all the campuses over the next several weeks. I know my Ian, my assistant, will be setting up meetings with every campus to make sure I have some time spent with the administration there, learning about the campuses, learning about our student communities, and how we can better serve them. So, thank you very, very much for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you, and we look forward to working with you. Any questions? So this adjourns our meeting. Thank you, and have a good evening. Thank you, and have a good evening.